To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty, justice for all.
All right. I'd like to start the meeting by taking a moment of silence. Uh, I understand lots of important persons have been town over the years. So, we'll take a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Um, I think we'll start with the director of the McQuab and House of Pizza, the CEO of Tisha Incorporated. Um, if you could come up.
Hi.
Hello. My name's Matt Urban.
Charlie Chase.
I understand, um, you're looking generally for a simple transfer of the license as the ownership transfers as well. Okay. Um, any questions or comments? Any thoughts on it? Um, all right. To us, it is a simple transfer of license. We find no issues with it. Is there any discussion from the public that would like to come up? Do you have a motion to accept the transfer of license?
I'll make a motion if we get the transfer of license. Second.
Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
For the time ministerate is off, see all the paperwork done. Thank you very much for coming. All right. Next, we have, um, members of the new Braintree Select Board. Their EMS department is representative as well as Bob Rogowski, our fire chief and EMS chief. Um, we're discussing the new Braintree agreement that we have with them to cover DLS coverage for their area. ALS, correct? ALS coverage for their area. Um, if you guys don't mind coming on up, we'll make it a big old party.
Sorry, I didn't think to bring the folder down. If you want, I can hold it if you wanted to grab your package.
It's full of comfy chairs if you guys want.
Yeah, use all the good chairs if you want.
All the good chairs up there. These are good ones. Charlie Chase, one of the members of the board.
Thanks to meet you.
Dennis?
How are you doing?
Okay. I know we kind of mentioned, but you just don't, I may never ask you.
Time him with love at Instagram.
Okay, so.
You guys want to give a 30,000 for view of where we are, how we got here and, because I know everybody's pretty new. I don't think anybody was here when we negotiated that original contract.
Agreed. So, that would be nice.
So, so what happened was, um, North Perfil was actually this EMS provider. Um, we ended up cutting ties with them, um, through some, uh, negotiations and stuff. I talked to Charlie Bullen at the time, um, about EMS coverage for the Braintree. Um, he said they'd be happy to do it, uh, and at the time, he didn't, wasn't interested in charging. Um, then it came to our attention at one of our meetings that it was that the cost of Towne of Barry money, um, for unpaid EMS receipts. Uh, so we met with the Select Board at the time, um, got the numbers of what we were behind in EMS receipts. And we tried to, we had like three meetings on trying to figure out how to cover it. The final consensus was we'll give you 10,000 dollars a year, um, because most of them are around 4,000, 6,000, um, per year monthly receipts. So, we said, let's do 10,000. Um, you guys are gonna provide us with, um, numbers on Front Coastal or whatever, what wasn't getting done and if it was keeping up. If the 10,000 dollars was sufficient enough. Um, and that's kind of where we ended. We have the contract here, everybody's got a copy of it. Um, so that's what we have.
Okay.
So, the point of it was so Barry wasn't losing money.
Right.
Because we used to give us fair for you guys to come on your branch and I, it cost me 6,000 dollars a year.
Okay.
And we did increase it to 15,000. For the schools, not in our budget.
In our budget.
Oh, understood, okay. Because I know that, um, if I'm correct, there is that clause where depending on the numbers, we can go back and ask for more.
Right.
So, I was just curious what your thoughts are, what you know between you and Andrew, if you've talked about any thoughts on it or just using that clause to follow up later.
I think after talking with Andrew, we thought, you know, if one thing in here was that it says that Barry EMS will bill patients 100 dollars for basic life support calls. They're called when the patient signs a refusal and 400 for advanced life support. We thought that if Braintree had increased theirs to the 15, that we should eliminate that clause because that would cover.
Oh, you're saying if we all agree just 15,000 a year covers everything?
Trying to get rid of the additional numbers thing and. Because like for one instance, we had a, somebody called 9-1, said there was a bicycle accident where the guy was just sitting on the side of the road, taking a break. And now it charges him 100 dollars. A minor car accident or minor car accident or something.
Yeah, it's also, so if there's a minor car accident, you know, the new Braintree dispatch sends us ambulance automatically. If it's a minor accident, nobody's hurt. Everybody at that car is getting a 100 dollar bill from us because it's just only the, and I, I don't really agree with that necessarily.
I got you.
I mean, there is a cost to the town, obviously. We send out ambulants, we tie it up for an hour, we assess the patients. And if we don't transport, our ambulance is out of service for that time. So, if there's a call in Barry, we're not going on it. But I don't know necessarily right to charge somebody for some of the service there.
So, you're not gonna charge in a Braintree either?
What's that?
You're not gonna charge in a Braintree either?
We don't charge our people in Barry, so I don't think we should do that in Braintree. Like if there's a car accident in Barry and they sign a refusal, we don't charge them. You know, we only charge for the, for transport.
Got you.
But I just felt that we could eliminate that clause. And I understand that was originally there to cover the expenses of us going over there and not making revenue for transporting. So, I thought if, talking with Andrew, if they increased it to 15,000, that eliminate that and that would be, that would be fair.
So, the idea now is almost eliminate all that clause and it would just be almost like a one or two sentence thing that just says, New Braintree will pay 15,000 a year.
Well, keep, keep the wording and just eliminate that entire, because I mean, if somebody calls for an ambulance and we get there and they, you know, you assess them and they're not really injured and they don't need to go, is it fair to send them a bill?
Yeah, I got you.
I mean, we are, the Towne of Barry is incurring the cost to go and do that, but at the same time, if the person doesn't truly need medical attention, should maybe get charged.
I mean, that one scenario is a perfect one where some random person called 9-1, saying the guy was involved in a bicycle accident. He's sitting there drinking water like.
Okay, so ambulance gets called out.
If someone's silly enough to sign it, they're signing it for 100 bucks, don't sign it. They didn't call for the ambulance, don't sign it. But the person who called for it signed.
Some people though.
Some people understand that, but I.
I understand that.
So, so the ambulance gets called out, there's no service rendered.
Correct.
Uh, is the Towne of Braintree going to get a fee?
At currently right now, if, if we get sent to a call and we get a refusal, a signed refusal, that person, that, that individual gets a bill from Barry, from our billing company. If, you know, speaking with Andrew, we kind of, like Dennis's example was a perfect guy. I was sitting on the, down by Evergreen Cemetery, taking a break. Somebody thought he was injured. The ambulance shows up, we check him out, he's not injured, he signs a refusal, he's gonna get a bill for 100 bucks. Is that, I don't necessarily agree with that.
No.
That's true.
But I don't, I don't agree where the Towne of Braintree or any town should have to pick up a cost to, uh, individuals that don't feel like they have to pay or don't want to pay. That's why I wanted to double check the wording, if there was something in there that identified us requesting additional funds from the town for a certain number of calls that exceeded a certain level where we say, and 15,000 is gonna cover, cover.
As far as I understand the contract, if Braintree is currently giving Barry 10,000, we're providing the ambulance. And then any, any money that we're not receiving that we bill, Braintree was going to pick up.
Right. I mean, the original, original fees like Dennis said, you know, were like five or 6,000 dollars, which was okay. And we said, okay, we'll hold 10,000 because you're doing the service for us and we can pay for some equipment if you need it, you know, kind of, we left it in there. Now, you know, we keep seeing an increase and I just don't want the residents of Braintree to just keep putting out money because somebody, oh, I don't feel like paying, you know, but I want the ambulance service. And that's what I'm trying to say is if we. So, then okay, you pay, you pay my way and I don't want to see that.
About a thousand. Bob, what was your budget for the, um, ambulance side this year? Total budget for the, for the year for the ambulance, roughly?
Four.
Four fifteen?
Four eighty-six.
486,000.
Oh, right, I forgot.
Together with 6,000 residents, you guys have a six of the six of 480 is 60,000, probably 80,000 dollars. So, we're not asking you to pay your share. We're not asking to pay 80,000. Um, but that's, you know, realistically, we're footing the bill to have it all and you guys are kind of skating for the cost per run, which is really not equitable for us. It's not equitable for the town.
Yeah, but you're collecting revenue too.
Trying to collect revenue to offset it, absolutely, but it, but it really doesn't all the way.
I mean, I consider.
But I think that's what they're doing is we're trying to work towards what ultimately a certain amount per person in town for fee overall or something.
When this contract came before, you know, you got this board together, you know, there was a lot of bills not going through to get fi, uh, fee or, you know.
Yeah, I think Bob's done a great job getting billing on the control.
You know, I know you guys eat, eat a lot of money because of it. And I, I just don't want to see that happening again.
I have, I'm not sure what that number is this year.
Yeah, that's the other thing. We would like to see some kind of record, but that we would know how many are in.
See the back of this again. Excuse me.
What was, residence last year above?
This year.
The 306.
400.
This last year, 400, so, so we ran about 80,000 short, which if you divide that by six is, you know, 14.
Yeah, I mean, but we hadn't seen any.
So, I'm still, it's pretty close at 15, that's pretty close to aggregate.
I mean, we hadn't seen any output or any, any feedback on.
I'm just, I'm just looking at logically. It sounds like 15 is pretty close to your equitable share of the part we're eating. So, I agree, that's why I agree. If we don't, if we're not, if we're not billing our residents, we shouldn't bill your residents and that should be equitable. As long as you're not paying that, that's all I'm looking for is to try to get a, to share equally for the number of.
That's the portion of our, of our interest is no low income. Most of the people have good insurance, so most of it should be covered, is what we found.
And if, really, if you bill someone in a car accident, not just on the side of the road, it should be covered by their insurance, but, um, but that's not the point of why it's done anyways.
Because the other thing I feel with the billing for refusals, sometimes it sways people's opinion from calling medical help. Because like for instance, an indication of a heart attack is like chest pain. Sometimes people get indigestion and they dismiss it. Sometimes it's really, I, I don't want to see somebody having a medical issue in Braintree and saying, I'm not sure if it's a real medical issue.
I'm not paying the 100 bucks.
And not calling the ambulance.
Because I don't want to pay the 100 bucks.
Because they are, for a paramedic, it'd be 400 bucks and then come to find out, you know, they really had an emergency and they delayed calling because they just didn't want to get a bill. And really, none of our, if somebody, if we go to somebody's house and they think they're having a heart attack, we give them a monitor and find out they just had indigestion, by all means, we're not gonna, we don't want to transport them for, for nothing. But I also don't think that person should get a bill for 400 bucks because, because then if they talk to somebody else, you know, I just don't want to see somebody.
Chasing a fire.
Yeah, I don't want to call them. They called them, they got billed for 400 dollars and I didn't go anywhere.
There's a cost to the town because we're tying our ambulance up, we're paying our people fuel for an hour to evaluate that patient, so.
We're beat to dead towards this point. I think we're all in agreement, we'll strike the, we'll strike that, I would think. I'd make a motion to strike the, um, sign off fees for the patients in Braintree as we do in Barry, as long as we're up in the, um, total contribution of 15,000.
I'll second that.
Yeah, I think from the.
Any further discussion? That would be, uh, section two, paragraph C.
My only thing is, uh, if we take, eliminate that, we should probably rewrite the contract with that, without that in it.
Yeah.
We can all sign it.
Agreed. Um, and are we agreed right now on like a new three-year?
Well, let's finish your first motion.
Well, this, this contract in a way would have expired April 2019, I think, based on the three-year. Do we want to rewrite it and just start a new one for FY19 as if it started July 1st?
Yeah.
And are you suggesting the 15,000 is just a one, that's the number? It's not gonna add, we're not gonna reduce, that's what it is?
That's the number for 19. That's the number for 19.
Okay, and then we can revisit, obviously, each year based on that.
Amend it each year. Because it sounds like it's pretty close to where it should be right now.
I think 15 puts us right.
Okay.
And I can, I can have the billing company run a report, see if there's any unpaid, whatever we haven't received from the billing in.
So, we can leave it as just if necessary, but if things stay the same, there's no reason to move it from that.
And I mean, la, last year, last year we did 68 ambulance calls in the new Braintree. This year, or to, to, as of today, we're at 39, so.
So, that's kind of vary, obviously, depending on the year.
We figured 60 is what we figured when we.
Yeah, that's car accidents and medical call stuff.
That's, that's fiscal year or December 1st.
That's December 1st to January 1st to December 3rd.
Okay.
So, like I said, for fiscal.
Calendar instead of.
Year 17, we went 68 times. And as of today, you know, halfway through the year, we've been 40, 39.
All right, so it looks like we're staying average. May end up still around 60 depending, okay.
All right. So, let's, let's clear this motion and then talk about the contract itself again.
So, we'll call for a vote on our side to remove paragraph C of section two. Um, call for the vote.
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor. I'm in favor. Um, next item would just, annual flat fee set for 15,000 to be revisited in the spring of each year while budgeting development is occurring. So, January, February, we'll have the end of the, this calendar say, okay, the numbers are still around 60 something, whatever. That'll give you a chance to say, okay, it looks like we're maintaining.
And when we get close to the fiscal year end, we'll know where, where our offset is, how close we are to breaking even on the ambulance.
Right, because I mean, if Bob goes number in early.
People just don't realize when, when you're, when you're paying for the ambulance and everything else, there's so much laid out front, it's just, it's unbelievable. But that's how we get these calls, he's making doubles all the time.
And I'm assuming, man.
Very rare to call for it financially now.
Yep.
So, yeah.
So, I make a motion for us to amend the contract and contribution to be 15,000 dollars per year and be revisited in the spring, only adjusted if necessary. Um, and.
Paragraph D kind of calls that out too, like February 1st would be the time to make sure we get the information.
And that we restart the three-year term for fiscal year 19 as of July 1st passed.
Yeah. Okay, and I'll second that. Okay, so, uh, any further discussion on that? While you're voting on your side. When we do it though, we still leave it open in case someone's got something to add to the discussion.
Something we haven't thought about or discussed before we vote on our.
It sounds, I don't have a problem.
Okay, so.
I don't put us to 15.
That'll put us to 15.
I'll take the notes, I'll get it to Andrew. He can write up the draft or we can, however we get to it. If I can get the word down.
They'll have to rework it, whatever the payment schedule comes out to be.
And then we'll get back to just sharing it, making sure we're all agree on it and then each board can vote on their own time and process it.
So, I, so I'll add to the motion and adjust the payment schedule as necessary to accommodate the 15,000.
Yes, so that would be, section two, paragraph D would be rewritten to identify 15,000 per fiscal year to be revisited each February 1st to plan appropriate budgeting. Okay. Um, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
So, if you guys come up with the same changes, we'll get this sucker signed, we're back in business.
Yep. Gotta go with that. As it disappears. I'll have to put different.
Each.
I'll have to double check that too, yeah, each. Any funds remaining?
Yeah, F and G I think would be things we would just kind of delete because it's just, we're looking at a flat fee, not rolling, not. So, um, yeah, I think F and G are both, like if it's an overrun or what, you know what I mean? We either save it or we ask for more, but this way it's just 15,000 is our agreement right now and we're not gonna have to.
These days, so we're just gonna F and G now? We're all gonna move to strike them officially?
E doesn't necessarily apply because of, but we might need to revise E to identify the, the payment this year is retroactive to a term starting July 1st, 2018. So, um, is, were you paying one lump sum twice a year, quarterly? Do you know what you guys are paying us?
I think they're paying a lump sum.
Yeah, that was a little confusing. I think that was like to get through that first three months of a fiscal year, just the 2,300 and then they started in a fiscal year and.
So, we spend the 20. Do you want to change this to 40,000? How do you?
How the payments are made throughout the year? Is it like a one lump sum at a certain time or halfway through?
That I don't.
We've got a lot of good changes down, couple more we'll have in all.
You know what? We'll figure it out, we'll put it in the draft, you can review it and then come back to us and say, you know, one lump sum is better than two or vice versa. Those details don't have to be.
Would you rather break it up into three payments or, to three portions?
The money's there.
It doesn't matter.
Right. And I don't think we're necessarily like, the way we do our money, it's not like.
The way those receipts go to.
Getting regular payments is gonna make a difference to the one payment.
Before the end of those business years.
Because we do kind of rely primarily on prior year receipts to keep it going, so until we get to the end of the year, we're not like, ah, we're out of money. Usually.
Is this going?
On a good year?
Is this going into ambulance receipts into general fund? This, this should hand ambulance receipts when this comes in?
Yes.
I believe this goes currently into ambulance receipts.
Just wanna make sure of that.
Then I believe either last year, last fiscal year, they may have sent a bill for, to the selectmen for unpaid receipts for residents.
Okay.
And I believe that went into, but I don't know if they've sent one since, it's been a while. So, it's not, and I believe that went to.
I don't think we've ever paid it.
No.
No.
It might have been two years ago.
I think. Okay.
I think the first, first year we did it, I think we had.
Yeah, but then, you know, since things have changed on your apartments and stuff, we hadn't been getting any receipts. So, you know, we thought we were okay and all of a sudden we got hit with this, wait a minute, we owe a bunch more money and we went, huh? And then we started going, where is all our paperwork to, you know, see, see this is happening? It wasn't anything.
So, we weren't getting anything through.
And I briefly mentioned, he's got a better collection agency that we're working with, as well as he's updated the whole 911 tracking system. So, he's got better tracking of actual all calls. So, we have more data now to support things also. So, if it ever came up and we hit a February 1st and we're saying, you know, we need 17,000 this year, whatever, we would have numbers also help support that, is all I meant.
But now we don't have to really worry much, just.
And I'm not suggesting even in a three-year term on this that that would happen. I'm just saying we're in a better position to support that if it does. Yeah, because I mean, when this first set up, you know, if we didn't use the money, you know, one time it was talked about, oh, we'll put it in a kitty in case the next year was worse. But then we said, you know, just spend what you need for equipment instead. And that's generally the same concept here now. So, now it's less details about it and it's just boom and use it to run ambulance and. Which we do a second, third time you come around and agreements like this, you kind of say, oh, this is working, we don't need this anymore.
So, we'll probably strike F and G and have Andrew rework payment schedule. You want it for the end of the year, sometime towards the end of the fiscal year?
Yep.
And everything else as we discuss, they should stay pretty much the same and.
I didn't say EMS really need to be, you know.
If it's working.
Yeah, it is working, working fine.
That's what, that's what's most important. It's working, it's working on our side still.
Right.
Going this smoothly, so. No, I mean, just. As it can, yeah.
Good.
Calls are calls. None for four days and six at once, that's just how it goes.
So, I believe we generally understand what we want revised. I'll work with Andrew to get a draft based on these revisions. He'll send it over to Teresa and you guys.
Could you just like the revisions for me real quick?
Yes.
Fiscal, it was.
The first one is if you go to section two, paragraph C, we're gonna eliminate paragraph C in full. Paragraph D and E kind of speak to the payment schedule. That's gonna be consolidated down primarily to say 15,000 a year for fiscal year 19, fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21. To be revisited each February 1st at budget season so that we all have an idea of what we think we can actually do so that if, if changes need to happen, we can accommodate them based on town needs.
And when were you gonna revisit?
February 1st. We provide any data from us where we think we may need a change and vice versa. If you feel there's a need, you would do the same to us.
Yep.
That gives us a few months to try to work our budgets if we have to adjust something.
Sure.
Um, and then the last thing is we were going to eliminate F and G as well of that section two, which also got back to how are we gonna manage the 15,000 and whether it carries over or not. Right now, it's just flat 15,000 a year and if we use it.
And it was in.
For service, great. If we don't, then we'll use it for equipment, pretty much just use it to maintain the operating budget.
It's our intention to restart this as a new three-year contract. That may mean eliminating and starting a new contract because typically we have a three-year term we're restricted to. So, we may just have to nullify and do another one at the same time and just start a different contract for three years to do it. Straightforward. We may not be able to amend this and add three because then the town is making it into a five-year contract. So, it might be.
I got you. We might not be able to throw in another whereas, we might have to.
Replace. We'll, we'll agree to discontinue the contract and replace it with a new one.
Right, because the last one had a whereas, I guess, from a previous agreement in August 2014. So, I'll let the legal people, but Greg's right.
So, that's why, just, just in case, the idea is to make it a three-year term, but that may mean dropping this contract and just making it a new contract in general to get the three-year term legit, rather than trying to extend when it's possibly outdated. Because we can only go so far normally legally without revisiting the whole thing. Just easy to revisit as we are rewriting or remake and re-sign it.
So, again, we're not 100% sure if they'll just send a new contract draft or revision of this one. So, but either way, we'll, we'll work with Andrew and try to get that to you.
If we can revise it, it's easier way we'll do.
He's out, his wife is finally in labor today, so he'll be in and out for a few weeks, you know, probably doing the one day at an office and spending as much time at home as he can for a few weeks. So, in August is probably when we'll start turning this around to you.
Okay.
Obviously, we already agreed, no payment's gonna occur till the end of the year, so we got a little time to.
Yep.
Work this, I believe.
Right, and our, our motion to stop charging payment should be effective now, I assume, to stop charging for sign offs.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
I would like that to stop.
I mean, if you're okay with that, Bob, we will, we'll agree to stop that immediately based on just common agreement.
Yeah, I think that should start now.
With that, we'll just go ahead and, he made the motion, do you second that?
Mm-hmm.
All right, I call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye, so.
Payment stopped today.
Formally, we're no longer charging people for refusals of service in the Towne of Barry. Just joking.
And if we run to Huppins dinner someplace outside, that's different. But if it's our primary recovery job, if we're not charging our residents, we should be charging our residents.
It's actually right at the end of section one, paragraph C, it's on page two. Or it's actually, wait, it is the first of, second, paragraph C, the first sentence.
Page one.
Bottom of page one.
Yep. Three years, okay.
And then it just says it can be renewed for another three years. Attention's usually decent. Look at this date up here and that's three years from that date, it's still in effect till 19, if you look at that date.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so, and if we're extending it three years from now, we're bumping.
So we'll probably strike F and G and have Andrew rework payment schedule, you want it for the end of the year, sometime towards the end of the fiscal year.
Yep.
And everything else as we discuss, they should say pretty much the same and.
I didn't say any of this really needed to be, no.
No, if it's working.
Yeah, it is working, working fine.
That's what, that's what's most important.
Yeah.
It's working, it's working on our side still.
Right, a bunch of dates, yeah.
Going this smoothly, so, no, I mean, just.
It is again.
As it can, yeah.
Good, good.
Calls are calls.
Yeah.
None for four days and six at once, that's just how it goes.
So I believe we generally understand what we want revised.
Yeah.
I'll work with Andrew to get a draft based on these revisions, he'll send it over to Teresa and you guys.
Could you just like the revisions for me real quick?
Yes.
Fiscal, it was.
The first one is if you go to section two, paragraph C, we're gonna eliminate paragraph C in full. Paragraph D and E kind of speak to the payment schedule. That's gonna be consolidated down primarily to say fifteen thousand a year for fiscal year nineteen, fiscal year twenty and fiscal year twenty-one.
And.
To be revisited each February first at budget season so that we all have an idea of what we think we can actually do so that if, if changes need to happen, we can accommodate them based on town needs.
And when were you gonna revisit?
February first, we provide any data from us where we think we may need a change and vice versa, if you feel there's a need, you would do the same to us.
Yeah.
That gives us a few months to try to work our budgets if we have to adjust something. Um, and then the last thing is we were going to eliminate F and G as well of that section two, which also got back to how are we gonna manage the fifteen thousand and whether it carries over or not, right now it's just flat fifteen thousand a year and if we use it.
And it was in.
For service, great, if we don't, then we'll use it for equipment, pretty much just use it to maintain the operating budget.
It's our intention to restart this as a new three-year contract, that may mean eliminating and starting a new contract because typically we have a three-year term we're restricted to. So we may just have to nullify and, and do another one at the same time and just start a different contract for three years to do it, straightforward. We may not be able to amend this and add three because then it's kind of making it into a five-year contract, so it might be.
I got you, we might not be able to throw in another whereas, we might have to.
Replace, we'll, we'll agree to discontinue the contract and replace it with a new one.
Throw to next year.
Right, because the last one had a whereas, I guess, from a previous agreement in August two thousand fourteen, so. I'll let the legal people, but Greg's right, there might be something that.
Just, just in case, the idea is to make it a three-year term, but that may mean dropping this contract and just making it a new contract in general to get the three-year term legit, rather than trying to extend when it's possibly outdated. Because we can only go so far normally legally without revisiting the whole thing. Just easy to revisit it as we are rewriting or remake it and resign it.
So, again, we're not a hundred percent sure if they'll just send a new contract draft or revision of this one. So, but either way, we'll, we'll work with Andrew and try to get that to you.
If we can revise it, it's easier way we'll do.
He's out, his wife is finally in labor today, so he'll be in and out for a few weeks, you know, probably doing the one day at an office and spending as much time at home as he can for a few weeks. So in August is probably when we'll start turning this around to you.
Okay.
Obviously, we already agreed, no payment's gonna occur till the end of the year, so we got a little time to.
Yep.
Work this, I believe.
Right, and our, our motion to stop charging payment should be effective now, I assume, to stop charging for sign-offs.
Yeah, I'm good with that, I mean, if you're okay with that, Bob, we will, we'll agree to stop that immediately based on just common agreement.
I would like, I would like that to stop. I think that should start now.
Um, with that, we'll just go ahead and, he made the motion, do you second that?
Mm-hmm.
All right, I call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. So.
Payment stopped today.
Formally, we're no longer charging people for refusals of service in the town of Berry. Just joking.
And if we run to Hobbitston or someplace else, that, that's different, but if it's our primary coverage area, if we're not charging our residents, we shouldn't be charging our residents.
It's actually right at the end of section one, paragraph C, it's on page two. Or it's actually, wait, it is the first of sec- paragraph C, the first sentence.
Page, page one.
Bottom of page one.
Yep.
I only read it quickly.
And then it just says it can be renewed for another three years.
Tensions usually decent.
Look at this date up here, and that's three years from that date, it's still in effect till nineteen, if you look at that date.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so, and if we're extending it three years from now, we're bumping into a six-year contract or a five-year contract.
Yeah. What it appears when I read this.
It might be easier to just.
Paragraph D explained how that happened.
We always go with fiscal.
Fiscal year sixteen was only like three months from April to July, and then FY seventeen and eighteen were included in the first three-year term. So we technically are without an agreement at the moment. But we're continuing to act in good faith on the fact that a agreement is happening.
So this is a calendar date here, actually, another fiscal date.
Right, this is just the date the contract was executed. Paragraph D seems to explain better the, the terms and dates.
It was supposed to tie the, to the fiscal year for the towns, and that's just when it started, it's the completion of that was in the first year.
Okay.
Which of course legally means a year by contract as well.
So, all right, do you guys have any more questions?
I don't think so.
Everybody happy?
Really appreciate you guys showing up and talking through it with us and, um.
Quickest way to get it done, send Adam, talk to him. I always cut through the BS and go right to the numbers, what's, what's, what's the fair share proportion by per population, we're already there, so.
We can actually do a vote, we can do a vote now. Yeah, we can do a vote now.
Well, you don't wanna wait till you have the contract and it's amended, but it's up to you.
I mean, we've already kind of voted on the changes, so we can, right, so we can wait until.
We're all gonna have to read it anyways, we broke up, we still.
It's the final, accept the draft and we'll do a final.
But you could vote and then just when you're looking to say, oh, this is what we said and bounce it back to a business.
The only thing I guess officially is.
We're not gonna charge for refusals.
Do we think it's necessary to do a vote to extend the current coverage until this is actually executed? Just so that both sides know that both sides are committed to continue the service, because if it takes till September, I doubt any issue comes up, but if it does, all of a sudden, neither of us have, but if we make the votes, at least we got some legal voting in place, so.
While our administrator is out in, his wife just is giving birth now, so we're not.
Still has time left.
Yeah, she'll kill him, so.
She's only like two and a half weeks overdue or something, so he's been waiting for a while.
So, we'll, we'll see him sparsely for a few weeks, so, and there's a lot in his play, so, I think it's a good idea to make that, so.
We should take a vote to extend this. Right, so I'll take a vote, I'll make a motion that we extend this until the new contract is signed. And a second, all in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to extend this under the agreed-upon new terms until no contract is signed.
Second. Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, gentlemen, truly appreciate your time. And keep in, thank you. Keep in mind that thing I was talking about, transfer stations, so if you can start the word and find out if there's actually any interest, it'll be key to our review of our own.
And then we really should talk to Hardwick.
This guy was also.
Talk to Hardwick about the recycling, since they have a recycling center established, it might be easier to let the cycling, we're a transfer station.
To manage the.
We take our transfer, push the recycling to them, let them deal with it, because right now for us, the money's in trash.
Right, so, all I had asked him is. Because we know it's.
I think if we set to get that.
He just, thanks very much, Teresa, have a good night.
I think that'd get, you know, I'm sure Hardwick would love that, and, you know, they didn't have to handle the trash and they can just take, they're already doing recycling, they probably bundle all, whatever they do is already established. They're already permitted to be a recycling center.
Exactly, and they've got the network and the logistics set up for how they get rid of it.
And they know where the money's coming from and what they can store.
And Teresa mentioned right now, they're at least breaking even, so somehow they're making the recycling work for what they need.
I told you, it's.
But that's all I mean, but by bringing them in, they've got experience with the recycling, they can also add to the committee's input.
Make a drive to Groton, look at the facility, and you'll say, holy crap, this is really well organized, simple to run. And you watch a truck come in from like Westford or Littleton and they dump a trail load of plastics, and it's cleaned up and put into the container with tobacco in a few minutes and they just pick whatever cans are out it, takes fifteen minutes and the guy sorts out a whole trail load. And then they just scoop it up in the bundle and pack it, and it's ready to be.
So like you said, if you've got the plan, it's just having the plan.
Setting it up, setting it up, the setup is, is the most important thing.
Right.
If it's, theirs is very organized, and that's what we need to put time into. Decide to move forward, that we have to establish what we can use of the land, what's agreed with, let's go through the Board of Health and D E P to lay out a new plan for where things gonna go. And if that's approved, establishing it and figuring out what that's gonna actually cost, if what we want to do and what we have to do it or want to do it, um, to control the costs. It shouldn't be difficult.
Okay. And, uh, that's the other thing, I know that not a. I'm still working on that Economic Development Committee draft. We never really got a transfer station committee draft completed, did we?
We did, but no one wanted to sign up, we've had.
Oh, so it's out there, we just haven't had applications to be on it, right, okay.
We haven't enough applicants to fill the positions, we were looking for, I think, five, so.
We definitely need more to apply.
We don't, we can go with the numbers we have and find more numbers on our own if we need to, and that's not the end of the world, but it would be nice if other people wanted to be involved in it.
So can I ask what this whole conversation is about, because I missed the beginning.
This was our, our green, regional agreement for ambulance service with New Braintree.
We don't know what, what Greg is talking about with the land fund.
Oh, we just asked about New Braintree to think about where they are to maybe get input towards that for later.
Oh.
New Braintree and, at, at the Q E M P meeting we had at Ruggles, the last one they had before they have something scheduled for September, I met this Teresa Keenan Allen from Hardwick and Joe, was it, from New Braintree, the guy with the yellow shirt?
Sharon Hall, I remember that.
Yeah, I met them there and we all ended up at the same table looking at things and it happened to be their group where they were talking about regionalization. And I'd mentioned that, we're looking at transfer station, but we only use twenty percent of the capacity. We thought maybe O Cam might be interested, and then all of a sudden Hardwick says.
Spikes some interest.
We would be interested because you're as close as our other option. So it's not, the travel's not the issue for anybody that is not using curbside or calling someone to collect for them. So they may have a portion of their population that would also like to use it. New Braintree might, and then if O Cam does, now we're actually talking about maybe going from twelve hundred current permits to maybe we make it to eighteen hundred, two thousand. But we're just, we're looking at the numbers to find out, but I figured, I saw them, I said, hey, if you think this is something your town might be interested, could you start actually pursuing it to find out? And come back to us and let us know if you think that's something you guys might wanna benefit from. I mean, right now, even if they only gave us fifty, it's still just fifty more. But when we were doing the numbers without any other towns, we were still showing this, we could still break even by lowering our current permit process. If we can get more towns involved, we could probably, even if we don't say we wanna go lower than seventy-five, which was kind of a safe bet, we thought we could get to sixty-five, but if we did seventy-five, we could still break even. If we brought in other towns, either seventy-five means we're doing better than breaking even, or we can actually lower the price a little more. So it would be, that's where we'd have to start looking into that, but I figured, you don't know unless you ask. So I asked, are you interested? A couple towns actually mentioned they might be, so I said, okay, let's, when we get this committee going, we need to make sure the committee knows to reach back out to them and start seeing what we can get to bring in input. Even if some of the input is just talking to Hardwick about their whole recycling, because they told me they're at least breaking even. So they don't pay to deal with the recycling because they can always bring in the income to pay for the cost to have it. So if they're doing that, maybe they understand why they're doing that and why they're succeeding can help us also better understand beyond just Groton. Because they're more of our size, maybe our region.
Or they might take it.
Well, right, but I mean, it would give us a, a way, because if they take it, we gotta figure out, because right now, the idea isn't necessarily town-to-town reimbursement, it's just opening up the permits, if they take it, we'd have to find out how to get that income back to cover our costs of running it. So it'd just be a financial review to figure that out.
And that's other things to look at, but it's, it's certainly a possibility, if we're gonna get revenue from the trash, allow them to make revenue off recycling, then we don't need the bundlers and packers. We don't need to haul that other than drive it over the town line and dump it off in bulk. So that this, there's a lot of possibilities, that's all, it's.
They wouldn't be bringing their trash to our town just to recycle it?
No, they wouldn't have full use like any other member that buys a permit. And then pay for all the additional charges for the additional things that come with it, you know, bulk waste, things like that.
We may take our recycling and give it to them, so we don't have to bundle it or handle it or deal with it. Because that was our biggest concern is where the money really is in recycling, what it's gonna cost for bundlers, the decent bundlers, how we're gonna haul, where it's gonna go, how long you can store it, how much you can store it away for prices. All those concerns go out the window because they have a recycling facility approved. They are a recycling center, they can take it. And they're already established, so.
And it may just be rather than them taking it, depending on how they ship it, they might just be able to get better rates because they can now bring in another centralized system and say, well, instead of this, we add forty more percent or fifty more percent of our recycling and now they can get a better rate.
We would double.
And so that would be, maybe we still get some of that, but it's just going under the umbrella of one Hardwick contract with whatever service they're using or whoever's picking it up.
I know Groton does that with other towns, they take it in and they, they say, well, you know, when it comes in, we charge you a set fee to process it and so on and so forth, and then they get a percentage of the sales. So it winds up the town that brings it gets like ten or fifteen percent of the money for the recycling, and Groton keeps the rest for processing. But anything's better than nothing if they're gonna take it and do all the work.
Right, so it was just real initial preliminary thoughts, but I was like, it came up briefly, and then when I ran into them, I was like, I just threw it out there, and then they said, you know, we might be interested.
Now, how are the volunteers that community coming?
I haven't gotten an update from Andrew to see if we've gotten any more than I think we only had two so far, was it John and Kathy? John Chase and Kathy Enman, I think, were the two that I remember.
So what do you do if no one else puts any in?
At a minimum, I would like a third, and then we just give it to them and then we get started, and if two more come on, we'll just add to it so they can help with. It's, it is a lot we're asking, so more bodies, more minds will help them get more info to.
To be able to talk to these other two towns too and see what they're thinking really opens the scope up to get a better idea of how the recycling goes there, if they're willing to take ours and look at the cost benefit from doing it versus giving it to them and what they go for. And, you know, helps anticipate what kind of trash we'll get, because both towns probably know how much trash they throw away. So we'll know that every bag they, every bag we take's a dollar profit, it's two bucks a bag, we keep one, it costs a dollar, throw it. So every bag of trash we get, we make money, and every stick we sell, we make money, and that's where our real revenue, as we looked at it, that's where the stream was for us. Recycling may come back and may not, but if, if we don't have to count on it, we don't have that spike, we're.
So what if no one, so what if no one else puts their name in, you just have two people?
We'll have to revisit it, we gotta get started at some point, so.
There's a cutoff date, right, they do, people want.
There was a cutoff date we had asked for because we know we got a certain date we have to.
Revisit the contract.
Notice with solidway solution. So, we do have a timeline, and I agree, it, it can't wait forever. I'm hoping we get more people to realize this is something that's important to the town and hopefully important to them to understand the benefits that can disappear if we don't act on certain things and we need help. It's, it's a hope, maybe someone hears this and they realize that this is something they might be able to help with. Maybe we got financial advisors that don't understand that that helps us because they're thinking transfer station and trash, but what we need is someone that can do numbers. It could be another additive to the other members that are there, so it's not necessarily limited on, do you understand trash? It could be, do you understand markets? Do you understand logistics? It could be a lot of things that, or it could just be, you don't understand anything, but you're a body that'll make phone calls and you'll go find info and you'll bring it together and you can help us, so. I think sometimes maybe people don't understand that, sometimes it's just willingness is better than nothing. That's my opinion.
This is, yeah, this isn't, um, I don't think it's awfully complex that we need someone with fantastic skills in anything, just the ability to gather some information and put it together. Not, not too hard, but time consuming.
So, now, we kinda spent a little bit more on that than I meant to because it's not on the agenda. It was, but it's okay, it wasn't hurting anything.
Considerate, old business.
Yeah, we'll do that today. What I'd like to get into now, just to see, I don't have it, but we can vote on it, I just don't have the hard copies in front of me. There's a special event permit for the Christmas in Berry Craft Fair Town Hall. There's also a request to use town property for Christmas in Berry. Based on the agenda item, I can't say if that's just Town Hall or the common or the combination of all of that that they usually use. But I'm not sure if there's any concern with all of that, as long as we can just verify with Andrew that whatever they're requesting hasn't already been booked.
Pending, yeah, pending the dates to make sure there's no conflict, that's the only issue, obviously, it's, it's the, an annual thing, and I would expect it to go through. We just need to make sure that the dates aren't in conflict, they probably aren't because it's probably marked off well in advance.
Right, and again, with the special event permit primarily for us, I think that's, did the police know what the route is or what's going on, and they work with the police, so.
And someday we'll revisit that permit.
Right, so we'll just make sure we get more info on that and then we can act on it.
Does the, will Lions Club be using their own money, or is there a budget to the town that they're using?
There's a combination of funds I believe they're gonna be using, they may be using some of their own money they receive through their program. I do believe that, at least it was my intent, I don't wanna speak for the whole board and everything, but with the, uh, holiday decorations line item in the town budget, fifteen hundred of that was still something that we were committing to. Partly because my understanding is the previous Christmas in Berry committee had gotten into a three-year agreement with a contractor to maintain the lights on the gazebo. And it was fifteen hundred bucks a year. And if we don't give it, then they've gotta come up with fifteen hundred bucks. And my understanding is because of where they're at, they hadn't done any fundraising this year because of retiring from the committee or not acting, whatever they are doing. I do believe that the Lions Club is working with them. I do believe they may have had a minor balance from, they've been having like a rolling balance that they always keep as Savior slush fund or something. So they may still have some of their own funds to help the Lions Club, so there's potentially three different funds. And when I mean slush fund, for all I know, it might be three hundred bucks, I'm not saying it was like they have this huge budget they've been working with every year. Might be fifty, I really never saw the number, so I don't wanna make things up and misrepresent here.
I'm sure whoever contributed regularly contributed again, but just to the Lions Club instead of the Christmas.
Right, or maybe they do it to the Christmas and then the Christmas gives it to the Lions Club, they're all gonna have their, but that gets into the private, and whatever they're doing with their own funds is kind of their thing, kind of like we had said before, all we know is we got fifteen hundred bucks that I believe the town should continue to give to them for.
Towards decorations.
This event and the decorations. At least through this year, because we went through the crazy upheaval of all the change, and I do think this is important to the town to continue this event. We can, can always revisit each budget year, what we think is appropriate for each. Each lineup. So do we want to make anything on the request to use town property or like a pending motion, or just hold off until we can see the hard copies?
What, say, make a motion to request, uh, the motion to approve the request for the, the use of the commons, pending, uh, determining a date that works.
Yeah.
Affirming the date.
Terminating with no conflict in dates.
That's all.
Okay.
Checking.
Call for a vote?
Aye.
Pending.
Date.
Date.
Confirmation, approval, whatever.
Confirmation. No conflict. And we'll table the special event permit until further updates from public safety, et cetera. Um, we received a resignation from Diane Cook from the Cemetery Commission. See if I can. Should have found her for a while. There it is, I just wanna get that out of there before I lose it. Wait, special events, okay, this is the Christmas in Berry. December first is the date they're looking for. December first is the date they're looking for.
I think you can shoot Faye an email and she can probably check, she probably still has her calendar.
She might, but she technically is resigned. It was a Friday. The thirteenth was her last day, so.
I thought those were the last word in the dance, though, two weeks.
No, she's, she's not like totally off the books, she's got some paid time off she's earning and.
Technically, she's paid time off, but you gotta ask her, I'm sure she'd respond.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and I don't disagree there. I think she even mentioned she would help us out for a little while if that's what it came to, so. I found Diane. Her resignation letter reads as follows, June twenty-first, two thousand eighteen, to whom it may concern, I'm writing as, writing to submit my resignation from the Town of Berry Cemetery Commission as of July twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen, with my last Cemetery Commission meeting scheduled for July twenty-sixth. After living in Berry for nineteen years, my husband and I are leaving for new adventures. We treasure our time spent in the community and hope that it continues to be pleasant, family-oriented town for many years to come. Sincerely, Diane M. Cook. I would just like to send out a thanks to her for the service she's provided. Another, I guess I would call it a quick one, is we have a common victor in holder license request for the Ice House Pub, which is taking over the old Higgins Motorsports old building there on the corner of, is it Worcester Road and Summer? That's a hard one for me to figure out. Thank you, Summer Street. And so, do we have any questions on that? Any concerns? Looks like they're just gonna be opening a nice, from the outside, it's starting to look nice, I don't know, hopefully it's nice. Kind of a restaurant pub type style.
Kind of a trailer, I believe.
Really?
Seriously, yeah, the kitchen stuff gets difficult, so.
Oh, I got you.
They've really gone a long way to comply with everything and make everything really safe and redundant, done more than they had to, but still they're I think they'll actually have bought a food trail, they're gonna cook in the trailer officially, so it's not hot in the kitchen, keeps the requirements down for them.
Gotcha. Then I would say that I guess I would just look for a motion to approve the application for a common victor in holder license.
Don't move. Second.
Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that was approved. I had heard someone said they might have been looking to open last week, but I know that they're still doing some exterior stuff, so I'm guessing they're hoping by the end of the month. But, it's a lot of hearsay, so I don't want to say that too strongly. Okay, let me get back to my agenda. The next one, I know there was a mortgage discharge for Oswald Marconi, but I would like to table that if you don't mind, until we have either Andrew or Jim Baird here, so we better understand the the reasons and the whys.
My guess is the same as the last ones from those loans.
Yeah.
Decade ago.
And no one's here representing them, so I don't think they're looking at it as a, I need it by next week. Okay, the next one, in my opinion, is the bigger one. It is the special permit request for the Spartan Race for August eleventh and twelfth, two thousand eighteen, up at the Carter Stevens Farm. We have a police fire building and health approval and conservation and planning, so that would mean we are the ones left. There's one thing I do know that has been brought to my attention by different members of the community, specifically the members in the the common. Is I I would request we add a stipulation where they provide a minimum of four porta potties on Common Street. Kind of down near there, we're set up for the Berry Family Fun Day. Three regular one eighty-eight accessible because I'm hearing that the numbers of people that come into town inundate the local restaurants for use of public bathrooms that aren't public. And often, if they come in, they might like buy a bottle of water and then go use the bathroom and then leave, and it just, they feel it's started to add to a burden, and I thought it wouldn't be a difficult thing to ask them based on the numbers of up to ten thousand people over the weekend, that they could put in four porta potties on Common Street to assist with that.
I think that's a certainly reasonable request.
I mean, we're not Worcester, we don't have public bathrooms in municipal buildings that can accommodate large numbers, so it's a little different.
Do you want to run that by him before we approve it?
Well, what I would like to do is approve it with that stipulation and not send him the approval until they accept it.
Okay, that's fine.
With Andrew out, I had emailed him saying this is something I thought I'd bring up to the board tonight. And I said, if we do agree that this is something to do, then I would email them with that. And based on the contact info and they, and I would keep him in, in the correspondence loop, Andrew, just to help keep this going, so they don't have to wait till the last minute to find out we approved it only if.
Exactly where we want those, so they don't wind up.
Yeah, I'll do like a Google thing, I'll just do a circle on it and say.
They can't be on the.
This is where we want them.
Can't be on the common with our memorials.
Right, exactly, know which part of the common is the common you're allowed to put them on and.
Them to look at that, go in, this would be a good place for them.
So, my intent was to dig out their contact info. Am I missing parts? Don't they normally start with a cover sheet that says something about email addresses or something? Either way, I'll, I'll chase down that info and since we're talking about it, I'll copy both of you in it also, just so that.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the application for special permit for the Spartan Race pending their acceptance to supply four porta potties, three regular one eighty-eight on the designated locations we give them up to.
Second.
Thank you.
Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. I missed it, but we have June eighteenth meeting minutes. We can table it if it's just easier, or I can give you the copy I have and you guys can review it.
I prefer to table it until we have it.
Let's table both of the meeting minutes, there was one for executive session for release, but we can get to that later as well.
Okay.
Another day. The only other thing was a list of appointments, and I want to see how that was written. I know Andrew talked about creating a new like comprehensive list with appointment dates or something to expedite this process of annual reappointments. I don't know if it made it into here. This is the Christmas in Berry request to use Town Hall, set up on November thirtieth and event on the first. So, that does line up with what they normally do. We'll have to table the annual appointments as well, because I don't have a list in front of me of who is to be reappointed this year. And we can I think that'll be an easy thing to follow up with next time around. I just blame Andrew, had to choose now to let your wife go into labor. Yeah, let, yeah.
Next appointment date, next meeting date.
So.
I'm gonna pick a date for our next meeting.
Next meeting, yeah.
Yes, I believe normally it would land on, oh, I was looking at it, it was August sixth, is it? Okay, our normal one would refer August sixth. Unless something comes across Andrew's desk and he says, hey, can we? Would August sixth work? I'm on vacation this summer. Gotta learn your lessons, Matt. So I'm on vacation this summer. But August sixth, I can make that date.
Okay.
Are you vacationing?
This time, thankfully. Yes, yes. I did receive, I, we received a letter, and it actually was more specific to the Fire Department EMS, and it may have gone to dispatch and then made it back to fire, but I'll just read it, it's about good work by some of our employees. Dear Board of Selectmen, I would like to inform you of the fine actions of one of your residents, residents. About a month ago, my wife while walking back from work has hit, was hit with an attacker vertigo. She couldn't stand up or open her eyes, happily she managed to get to the side of the road, but was then unable to do more than sit and eat poison ivy. Several cars passed by without stopping, then Jacob Pachalski stopped to help. He identified himself as a first responder with the Berry Fire Department. Jacob, with another passerby, got my wife off the road and into our house. He then called for an ambulance, after making sure that she was being attended to, he left. Having to keep her eyes shut, she never saw him. We tracked him down through our dispatch center and we've since met him. I have spoken with your fire chief about this and thought you would want to know what a sharp and competent young man works for you. Sincerely, Eric Volheim, North Road Hardwick. So.
Nice one.
And I know personally, I've had two trips in a Berry ambulance in the last eight days. Sunday, when I had the injury to my hand, and they were extremely competent, polite, helpful, considerate. And it was a rather potentially severe injury, so they did a great job putting me together and then actually advising what hospital might be the better hospital to go considering the situation, and brought me to that hospital, so that was great. And then I got an antibiotic the next day. The next night, I woke up with hives and my tongue swelling, and so EMS came again, this time the paramedic, a different crew showed up, and once again was immediately able to help me out, take care of the situation, get me on an IV drip of Benadryl and start calming the situation as I was on my way to the hospital. So I can't say enough about not only their abilities, but also their mannerisms and the way they work with the people that they're working with. Both times also, which is not unusual, Berry Police had the first responder show up first and also came to assess and just help make sure that things are in the general coordination at that point as they do. So, I just wanted to say that I think we got good people working for our town and they do a really good job.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Our families have a lot.
Can I ask one question? Did you fill base positions?
We have not, I believe there's actually a handful of interviews scheduled for this Thursday. Andrew is conducting the interviews and he's actually chosen a couple other people to assist with that, just to help get a balanced view of them. I think he's hoping by the end of the day of those, he might have someone to recommend. And when he, my understanding is once he has the one, before we close it, we'll do a quick interview with the Board of Selectmen to make sure we're all on the same page as well. And then, so we're hoping by the, in the next, well, it would probably be August sixth, we would truly appoint it. If the need for more help comes up before that, we may be calling for an unexpected meeting, but I don't know if it'll be as much a need because we happen to be at the right time of year where you could wait a couple weeks and then just bury the new assistant with work that's been building up.
How many applicants did you receive for that position?
Twelve, I believe.
I believe twelve, and I think of the twelve, he mentioned something about five of them he had scheduled interviews with. Initial, you know, he may, after going through all five, say, you know what, I think I gotta interview more, I'm not sure. But that's the update I think we got was twelve applications and then five interviews or something. Other than that, okay, table those. You know, my handwriting's not any worse with this, but it just tells you how bad it was to start with. Do any selectmen report, anything you want to? No? Time administrator report, no, okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn, or do you have anything else you guys would like to bring up before we close the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Call for a vote.
Aye.
Boom, seven forty-two?